Start with a couple of point statements. Girdwood, in order to supervise its committees and subcommittees, are subject to the Alaska Open Meetings Act, as found in Alaska Statute 44 of 62.310 and Anchorage Municipal Code 1.5 Public Meetings. Girdwood Supervisors operates under Girdwood Public Meeting Standards of Conduct. I will call the meeting to order at Row Two. We'll do a roll call of GBOS members and any disclosures. My name is Mike Eddington. I'm co-chair and land use supervisor. Who else is other supervisors online?
Amanda Sassy, the public safety supervisor.
Thank you.
Then that's the wind guard, roads and utilities.
Thank you. Are there any disclosures? Okay, not hearing anyone. I will also recognise Amy Dobasky, municipal manager, and other guests. So can I hear a move to approve today's agenda?
I'll move to approve. This is Amanda.
Thank you, Amanda.
Second.
I'll second.
Thank you. I'll move to assent unless I hear any objections. Okay, hearing no objections, our agenda is approved. Quick announcements, public is encouraged to ask questions and provide comment. Please raise your hand and wait to be acknowledged. Help discussions stay productive. Please direct your comments to the board or to other members of the public and keep your comments focused on the business under discussion. Be respectful of everyone's opinions. We'll dive straight into the agenda. So item number one is cemetery bonding for 2023 for Girdwood. Eagle River Anchorage Memorial Park, hopefully appearing on the bond. Who is able to speak to this? We would have Tommy here.
Well, Tommy.
Brianna will be here. Brianna won't be able to make it until quarter past, unfortunately.
Maybe we should move on and hit this when she is back.
Okay, we can do that. So we're going to move item number one if, again, if there's a cent, let's move item number one to later on to the agenda until when Brianna is back or when Brianna is here. Do I hear any objections? Okay, we'll move item number one after item number three. So move on to item number two. Addition of housing and economic stability is a power of GBOS. I will start speaking to this and then we'll open up for questions. So we have not made a formal decision on this yet. This is not a formal position of GBOS, but we've started discussing it and we wanted to bring this up to municipal administration. So the idea here is that Girdwood in the past has brought as basically added powers for cemetery, police, fire, and then parks and rec as well as roads. So we have more local services than I think any other community in Anchorage. And one of the special services we clearly need is around the particular issues that housing in a resort generates. On top of the general problems of housing everybody has, we have a lot of specific issues as well. There is a kind of document in the packet which goes into some more detail about this, but I'm just going to paint an old brush initially. So because Girdwood, no entity in Girdwood, the only government entity we have in Girdwood, which is GBOS, has no power at all over housing. It's not one of our five regular powers. And there is now a plan which has been adopted and revised, or revived, I should say, which basically says Girdwood should be taking an active role in some of this. The proposal I came up with and is being discussed by GBOS is to add a service area power to look at housing and economic stability. And this is really analogous to the cemetery power we had in the past. So it's really looking at putting together a future structure and finding future sources of funding. But in order to do that, we need some expertise and we can pay for that expertise if we get this power from taxpayers. So we'd basically be using some of our local taxes to start this project and then the project would be running in the future with other sources of funding. So there's a reasonable amount of detail in the packet here and we just wanted to make sure you, Amy, were aware of this and the Department of Law and any other people who needed to be. And independently, we're discussing with the Assembly as well. So if this is something GBOS decides to move forward with and we get, you know, we would be looking to put this on the ballot as early as next April. So unfortunately, I can't see if anyone has their hands up or is questioning. I'm going to stop there and just take questions and any other comments or thoughts. Amy, please go ahead.
Hi, this is Blair Christian, Sam, the acting municipal attorney, and I'm sitting next to Amy. Hi, so I think that it'd be helpful if potentially you could give the Department of Law, and I don't know if this is what we're, this looks like my proposal for additional Girdwood Valley service area, if we could take a look at this because my inclination and the research we've done so far is that housing and economic housing and stability might be a different power and it might be covered under state law. And so we'd have to look at a variety of different municipal and state of Alaska laws to see what the limits on your ability to do this would be. And so I'm looking at for the first time this proposal. I'm not sure that, I think I heard that you wanted to have it on the ballot for April. Is that what I heard?
We're saying that potentially the earliest, if it would work.
So we can try to have the research done. I have a feeling it's going to be kind of a deep dive into the ability of a board of supervisors, you guys are kind of uniquely set, but a board of supervisors to have this power. And we can try to start researching this, but I have a feeling that it actually might be different than cemeteries and roads and things like that, that housing is actually more of a rigidly regulated industry. And so we'd have to look at that.
Yeah, I just want to make sure there isn't any misunderstanding about what this is intended to do. It's not that the board of supervisors would sort of run housing as an owner or necessarily develop housing by itself. It's primarily, initially in the first phase, it's getting the expertise into place so we can have a proper plan to execute to. So that is a, seems to be within the remit of, you know, the board of supervisors. It's very analogous to the work we did for the cemetery. GBOS paid for, or our local service area paid for the feasibility study for identification of land, for identification of future funding sources and for the initial concept plan. And it would be somewhat analogous to that initially. And then what happens after that, I think we need expert, we need some expertise locally as well to understand what the options are after that. So that's kind of what we're paying for. So it's a, it would be a feasibility study, a housing action plan, et cetera.
Okay, so it's more of a planning function, less of a regulatory function?
Initially, definitely. And part of that, I think, is to discover what the, you know, we would be doing similar to what you're suggesting. Have to discover what the options are as a second stage, as a continuation stage.
Okay, so maybe there's a point at which, I'm going to provide this to the attorneys that work in the land use area. But it sounds like, I'm just going to repeat it back to you so I understand. So it sounds like it's more of a, of a planning feasibility study initially and that you're not immediately looking for regulatory authority, but that might be something that you're looking at in the future.
Potentially, although I think any regulation would be done through land use regulations. So there is a point in here, I point out the building code, for example. There is a clause in the service area powers which says that service area cannot be, you know, formed to create regulatory functions. The building service area kind of looks a little bit like it does, but my understanding is building services are a kind of an area-wide function and then the enforcement of it is done just through part of the municipality. So it wouldn't be that dissimilar. So there may be things in either, you know, in Title 21 which talk about requirements for subdivisions, for example, and then they're only enforced within Girdwood. But then we already have a chapter nine within Title 21, so that's another way of doing the same thing. But it would not be through the service area per se, it would be through Title 21. But that's a detailed discussion we can have later perhaps.
That's helpful. Thank you. And I don't know, Amy, do you have this packet? Is there some way I can get a copy of this proposal?
Yeah, sure. We'll make sure you have that by the end of the day. Okay, is there any other questions or thoughts on this item? As I said, this is not a formal proposal from the board of supervisors yet. This is just a heads-up warning. It may be coming very soon. I'm not seeing any questions in the online or in the audience in the room. So we will move on to item number three, Holton Hills project. So we were hoping, I don't know if Adam is on, is online, I didn't see his name earlier, but we're hoping to get an update on the MOA's sort of status really, on what they're looking at for the Holton Hills project. We have engaged through, we have a subcommittee which pulled together the primary community concerns and suggested a number of potential ways forward. And based on the last response we had from Mr. Tremblay, it looked like none of those were things that HLB were prepared to support. That's the impression we got. It may be, it didn't completely rule things out, but it definitely did look positive. So I wonder if we could get an update.
Yeah.
Oh, hello.
Mike, Adam here. Hey.
So if you could, if you could characterize that letter properly, because that's the way it read.
Yeah, I'd be happy to. So when I met with Sam, and I'm sorry, I can't remember the other person that was there in our second meeting, the Holton Hills Subcommittee came forward with a list of, I can't remember, maybe 11 different things. We looked at the list. Some of the things were very vague, like increasing density. I asked how much density increase do you want to see? And the answer, the answer was, we don't know. And so it was difficult to make a commitment on some of those things because I can't commit to, for example, higher density if I don't know how much more density it is that Girdwood is looking for. One of the things that I did agree on looking at was number six. And number six dealt with $500,000 seed money from HLB to some sort of housing authority as well as land within the Holton Hills subdivision where there would be a 10-year development timeline. Like there would be a reversionary clause that if in 10 years there wasn't development on the lots that were given to, that were provided, that those would then turn and revert back to Heritage Land Bank. I asked that group, I asked Sam, and again, the other, the only that I cannot remember a name. There was no, there was no commitment to this is the group that we would like the money to go to. This, this is the land we want the money, that we want that to go to. And so when I brought it up with the Department of Law, I said, this is what they're wondering. Is this possible? And so since I was never able to get a firm, we wanted to go to Girdwood Inc. Or we wanted to go to Girdwood Community Land Trust. The only one that we really were able to look at was the Girdwood Board of Supervisors. And so the land, so that letter addressed the Department of Law's review of whether $500,000 out of HLB funds could be given to GBOS and land could be given to GBOS for development. The answer was no. The answer was no. On top of that, the other challenge associated with giving five, half a million dollars to an entity out of HLB fund, and this is something I don't know if people understand, is that HLB fund, the HLB fund is not 101 supported, meaning it's not property tax supported. It's designed to be a self-sustaining fund. And so as money goes out for, in the form of, say, we'll take Holton Hills, for example, HLB is spending money on Holton Hills in return for a 50-50 split on the profit because if we're going to pony up something, there has to be something given back. And so the answer, I could never, I don't know if we just gave $500,000 with no strings attached, with no refund, some sort of ability to recoup that money, I don't know what that does to the solvency of the HLB fund. Again, we don't get annual property tax revenue from that. It's self-sustaining based on investments that HLB makes in land as well as revenue that comes in in the form of leases and stuff like that, or profit sharing in the form of Holton Hills. So it's very difficult to see what that would do to the long-term viability of the fund. And so that's why that was very difficult to explore without understanding what are the, what are the details associated with that $500,000? Is it a partnership? Is it a 50-50 split? Is it a, you know, who knows what all the deals that could possibly be made? So that's what the letter sort of addressed.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Tremblay. Any questions in the board? I have some comments if not, but any questions from anybody else on the board? Okay, yeah, to follow up on that. Can you, my understanding is the, the answer that GBOS can't take the land is a little unclear, given that the service area does have management responsibility for land within Girdwood, which is owned by the MOA. And I don't understand how that would be different. Perhaps again, we could get an answer from our attorney.
Sure. Well, I can say that HLB land, in order to dispose of HLB land, I mean, you have to follow the HLB code as well. So I, you know, Blair, I'm sorry, I cut you off. Maybe you could help address that question.
So I, I think too, the question there, I think there's a difference between the MOA holding property and GBOS holding property. The MOA can always, we have, we hold all kinds of property. GBOS doesn't, isn't a legal entity that holds property.
Right, the service area does hold management responsibility for property and depending how it's represented in, it looks a little bit like the service area may hold property, but it absolutely holds management responsibility for property, which is then held through, which is I think formally held by MOA. So for example, there's drainage areas, there's dedicated parks. All of these are managed under GBSA. So there is local management, although it's still owned by MOA. I do not understand how or why that isn't an option in the future. And it seems like the letter we got from Mr. Tremblay said this is absolutely impossible. And it doesn't seem.
Are we saying for GBOS to own the property?
I'm not sure if it's GBOS to own the property. The point of the question, original question, was can a Girdwood entity effectively manage it? And ultimately, ownership would be determined in the future about how that's, you know, potentially there would be a partnership with some other entity. We haven't obviously got to the point where we have the details of a project lined up. So the question is, can it be held by management from a Girdwood entity in the meantime until a project is put together? Now, there probably should be requirements about, around what that project is. But the letter we saw from Mr. Tremblay said no. And to me, that doesn't seem like a, it seems like an overly narrow answer and probably not a fully accurate answer.
I think a lot of it, I don't want to speak for Adam, but a lot of it is that there, there seems to be kind of this vague idea of what you want to do and when you ask, I will tell you that when you ask attorneys vague questions, you don't get great answers, right? Because we deal in specific facts. But I think part of the issue is that, as Adam was saying, that currently the land is in the Heritage Land Bank and to transfer it out, there's a process for transferring it out. And here, that process has been to enter into a development agreement with the company that is going to be developing Holton Hills. And so it will not be held by the municipality any longer. The development agreement means, right, it is the structure of how we're moving it out of HLB, which we've already entered into this development agreement, is that it will be transferred into private hands. It won't be held by the municipality bankage. So we're not moving land out of the Heritage Land Bank to hold it in the municipality bankage. We're transferring it to a private entity.
Yes, and I think one of the, one of the questions is if the land comes back or effectively goes into the private development, which is currently set up, and then some of that land comes effectively back through local government, can it be held somewhere until there is, with a defined purpose, until there is the equivalent of the development agreement for the actual development of that land? Because clearly, we do not have that today and it would be unrealistic to expect that to be in place today because it only became a potential option a few weeks ago. So because of the.
Are you asking? Can I just ask a clarifying question? I'm sorry.
Yeah, sorry. My clarification is basically, can it, can a set of requirements be put in for how that land should be used in the future but still be held by an entity which is effectively a local Girdwood entity to manage that land?
Theoretically, in the future, could we write that into a development agreement? I mean, maybe, and the legal department could research that. The problem is that we've already entered into this development agreement and then the Heritage Land Bank is in the process of determining whether to remove the land or not remove the land from the Heritage Land Bank. And so, right, that it's, it's kind of, I don't know if it's a chicken or egg question that, I mean, theoretically, in the future, if we remove, if we are in the process of trying to negotiate a development agreement, could that happen? And the legal department could certainly research that. The problem here is that we've already negotiated and agreed to a development agreement in which we're going to transfer it into private hands.
I understand.
That answer the question? I'm not sure if that answered.
That partly answered my question, except the original proposal was actually to transfer all of the land to the developer and then the land, some of that land to be transferred back. That was how the remainder portions were going to be done. I'm effectively asking for an analogous process.
I see. I mean, certainly we can look into whether that's possible. I'm not sure if, and I also wanted to clarify, it's part of the question whether, if that private entity breaches the agreement and the land comes back, if you want kind of contingencies around us kind of retaking that property.
Okay, yeah, I understand that question. I think that's a detail we haven't thought through yet.
Okay, but if you want to write up your questions, we're more than happy.
Okay, understood, understood. Okay, and then I think the, just to, back to Mr. Tremblay, I think the, the situation which I think I'm struggling with, and I know other people have struggled with. Actually, I'll let Jen speak to you. Jen, you have a question. I'll let you go first.
Thank you, Mike. That was, just it's a follow-up sort of on yours. If I'm understanding the answer to this correctly, I guess the part that I don't understand or that I'm not clear on is if any transfer from HLB shouldn't, for the land that goes back to HLB, if that land then is somewhat or another, in one way or another, able to get under Girdwood purview, I don't understand how that would violate the development agreement because it doesn't affect the, I don't think, if I'm understanding correctly, it doesn't affect the land transfer between HLB and CY Investment.
I think I can take a stab at that one, Mike. It is, so my numbers might be a little bit off here, but just bear with me as I probably am slightly off here, is that the Holton Hills area is about 90 acres. And the development agreement is that of that 90 acres, let's assume that only 30 of those acres are actually developed, right? And then they go into private ownership. The remaining balance of what isn't developed then reverts back to HLB. That's a part of the development agreement. So if I hear what you're saying is that you want to have a separate development agreement with a, in this case, I don't mean this in a derogatory sense, but with a fictitious organisation, because we don't know what that organisation is, that would then have a separate development agreement that says all the land that isn't developed in Holton Hills doesn't revert back to HLB, but instead reverts to this fictitious group or organisation. Is that what you're asking?
That's not what I'm asking. It is, of course, there are, I can see potentially several parts. I think what we're, what I believe what we're asking for is of the land that is developed, some of that being, instead of the, all of the profit being taken as 50-50 split, some of the profit being taken in the form of land and that land subsequently to be either held by HLB or to be held by a Girdwood entity. For example, if we did have housing powers, perhaps it could be under that. That is obviously a separate question. But some of that land to be held by, under Girdwood management. And then there would be a subsequent development agreement for that land to form the sort of housing we're looking for and need. So it would be a two-step process, but it would be a land coming back to HLB instead of the profit of the, of the deal. So that seems to be.
So what you're saying is that once.
Development agreement per se.
So what you're saying is that once all the infrastructure is put in and the developer and HLB have spent the money to develop the parcel, those parcels, you want to take, and you want to take a total number of those parcels and then those are just given to a Girdwood entity for development at a later time?
No, they would be, because there is not a, there is not a developer of lower-cost housing sitting here ready to go. And there are, of course, you know, as you know, it's taken a year or so to get to the point, a year and a half to get to this point in the larger project. So it would take a period of time to set up the specific development of housing on those small number of lots. The question is, can, instead of taking 50-50 profit, can HLB take developed land as part of the profit and then, you know, put some commitments in writing that it would be used for the benefit of, you know, Girdwood? Ideally, it would be held by an entity which is locally managed in order to produce this housing within the five-to-10-year timescale.
Okay, I understand what you're asking now. I understand what you're asking. The only question that I would have is, I don't know what that does to the HLB fund. And, I mean, that, the economics have to be run and unless there's some sort of long-term 50-50 split with HLB and this Girdwood entity at some point in time in the future for the development of those lots. So, I mean, there's a lot of moving parts, but I do understand what you're saying, Mike.
Okay, thank you. If you gave me or Blair have a comment or question?
I just wanted to say, Adam, correct me if I'm wrong, but the 50-50 split is, was negotiated as part of the development agreement, which is now an executed agreement. And so that's a kind of a, right, like we've already, we already have negotiated this agreement and so that would be something different than the agreement that we negotiated.
The development agreement would have to be amended and it takes both parties to agree to the amendment. So it'd be CY Investments and HLB have to agree. Yes.
Yeah, and so we would be in a, right, like they're, they may or may not have any impetus to do that, but either way, we're, to the extent that we've already executed this agreement, the agreement is what it is.
Understood. Thank you. Obviously, the, you know, from a, from our community point of view, we have a, we have a set of needs for housing. And in fact, the RFP acknowledged this in the original proposal. And some of the responses back, sorry, in the original RFP, it acknowledged some of our local needs. The response from CY Investments and Memorial also acknowledged many of the needs. When we saw the development agreement, which we were obviously not party to at all, it did not touch any of those. So while I understand that it is a challenge to modify the development agreement, I should also point out that I do not think that the municipality actually paid much attention to the needs of our community when negotiating that development agreement. And as I said, we were not party at any level. We only saw it after it had been executed, a month after it had been executed. So, you know, while it would be an ideal to have these features in from the very beginning, that's not a decision HLB took. So we are where we are here now and we're trying to, you know, from our position, fix the issues that were not covered earlier.
Sure, Mike, I got a question for law. And I just, because I don't know. So generally speaking, Blair, when development agreements are done between, say, the municipality and another entity, is it typical that they would engage a community? Like, say, for example, in this, in this situation, like Girdwood, for example, would CY Investments or GBOS go and say, hey, we're developing this development agreement, putting this together. Tell us what you think. I don't, and I'm asking, I don't know if that's, is that something that's done?
It's not something that is done during the negotiation of the agreement. And I think it was referenced. Community councils or citizens or the assembly might provide us direction prior to the execution of the agreement. And then we enter into the negotiation phase of the agreement and that's done kind of as a non public process, the negotiation between parties during the contract negotiation. And then the resulting contract then goes through whatever advisory board that it's subject to. And then ultimately, the assembly. And that's where an additional public process happens where the assembly and the members are, you know, they hear public testimony, citizens can reach out and tell them to, yes, voted up, voted down, no, voted down, but that's generally the two ways in which the public participates, either with direction ahead of time or during the public process that occurs after the negotiation of the contract.
Thank you. If I could, I will just make one quick comment. I mean, I appreciate Adam's question. That is not what the that is not what we were actually asking for. What we're asking for is the government. The government, our local government, in this case, H L B, to represent the needs of the community. And H L B did not represent the needs of the community. So yes, I mean, I think we sort of somewhat made it clear at the beginning of the process. And definitely, we had many discussions about it during the early stage of the progress, process. I'm just saying that we did not identify this problem with the development agreement because we never saw it until a month or so after it had been executed. So I think the assumption was that the that the requirements put in the original request for proposal would be followed. And the and the and many of the characteristics in the response would be followed. And I think the important ones were not. But that's a criticism of the past and the our responsibility is to look at now and the future of what we can do at this point, which is why we're asking for things that may require a renegotiation. Or may not. I think it's not entirely clear. I mean, I could see a model whereby H L B had a separate, had a separate agreement to purchase some of the properties, effectively just purchase them back. That could be another way of doing it. But again, I don't think there's any value going too far down into the details here. I think the what we're asking for in general, I think we've clarified. And again, I would just ask if any other board members have comments or questions on this topic. Jennifer, please go ahead.
I just want to do, thank you for your comments. I think that sums up a lot of what the struggle has been about. And I don't want to go back and rehash old things anymore than you do. But I would like to point out to everyone in the meeting that this is a very tough sell for the community and that what we're hearing is almost universal disagreement with this. The community doesn't see any upsides to this for Girdwood. And I would hope that that would be seen as problematic for both H L B and the developer. And we can leave it at that and move on.
Yeah. Did you? Okay. Yeah, I'd just say one last thing, then. The, I think there's a, there's sometimes a misunderstanding that the solution to the housing problem in this community is more housing. And that is absolutely a necessary part of it, but it is not an adequate part of it. If that housing all or the majority in the all of it goes to non residents or people who are not current or future residents of the valley and just becomes vacation homes, it doesn't make the situation any better. It doesn't help. And it definitely does make the situation worse. And we can point to numerous other resort communities that have the same experience of large developments without without a community housing component. Large developments that just become vacation homes have not helped the situation and have made it worse. So it's not just simply building more houses. And I have heard that statement before from members of the administration that building more houses will solve the problem. And there are plenty of counter examples and no evidence to support that assertion. Anyway, and if there are no more comments, we will move on to the, sorry.
This is Brianna. I'll make one comment. Thank you, Mike. I just wanted to agree with the previous speakers, Mike and Jennifer, for contributing very well said comments reflecting the community's needs and thoughts through the last several months of this process. And right now, as it stands, the where we are is not where Girdwood is is content with. So that's all I would like to say for now.
Thank you. Connie, I see your hand up.
Thank you. I just want to say two things as far as my mixed density is concerned. So I have agreed verbally and would be happy to put it in writing that for the single family homes, the minimum requirement for a lease would be thirty days. You know, families change and evolve. And I do believe that the property right to lease their home at a reasonable period, a reasonable period of time that sustains the homeowner ownership intent of the property. So that can be written into its codes and restrictions. And it can be enforced through the homeowners association. So my attorney is here and we've had these discussions about the fact that in the homeowners association, it could, we could write into the requirements that one hundred percent of the homeowners would have to agree to change that thirty day minimum lease requirement. So that, in my opinion, satisfies the intent of providing home ownership opportunities. And that would also apply to any A D U that is also built in the single family homes. Then, as far as the mixed density, as far as townhouses and condominiums, in order for those types of units to have long term financing, they require a fifty percent owner occupancy at the time that the properties are first rent, are first sold. That's for A H F C, that's Ben May, Freddie Mac, that's for V A. And again, the requirements to maintain that fifty percent owner occupancy can be written in. And also add Natalie, what is it you said? And those associations also have to be re accepted every two years by the same entities that originally approved them, F H A and Alaska Housing. And so they have to go through and prove by a owner's list that at least fifty percent of the owners are, fifty percent of the units are owner occupied. And we.
Sorry, could you, could you just tell me who was, just for a record?
I am. Natalie Smire. Natalie Smire runs our H O A division here at Berkshire Hathaway. She has over ten years of H O A experience.
Thank you.
Actually, she just told me she has way more experience than that. How many years to?
Two thousand and five.
Since two thousand and five, she's been in H O As.
It seems only ten years ago, doesn't it? But it's seventeen.
Right. So I just wanted to make that clarity. And I do believe that that conforms to the intent of the R F P. The other comment that I would like to make at this time is the R F P and my proposal was for residential land development. That I am a planner for developments and am responsible for putting in the roads, water, sewer, shallow utilities, creating the covenant's codes and restrictions, the declaration, and also then providing the financing and marketing opportunity. I do not do construction. So these properties will be on the open market. They will be available to a variety of builders, including local Girdwood builders. But they are designed in the city plan that does allow for affordable housing. But it's up to the builder that the property, these lots, I have to go out and find the financing, the tax credits, everything. But we are creating the opportunity by the design and the tracking that we are providing.
Thank you. I know the 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 comment has been made before in meetings that whatever the the requirements are of some funding bodies for condo ownership of owner occupation. We do not see that pattern in Girdwood. The last several condos that have been built have, I believe, zero percent or maybe one out of many units are owner occupied. The rest are not. So there are, obviously, there are other funding mechanisms and that's what happens here.
Well, I am not, I am not responsible for what another developer has done or plans to do. I am making that commitment here today and I have repeatedly in several meetings that that is not how this project will be. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate that. Unless there are any other comments, I think we've, we've covered the status of this. There is obviously more work to be done over the next couple of weeks. And I look forward to the responses from the attorney's office as well. I don't see any other comments. Is your hand still up, Connie, or did you have another comment? It looks like it was still up from earlier. Okay, so if there are no more comments, then let's move on to, we're going to move on to item number one now, which is the cemetery bonding in twenty twenty three. Brianna will be able to speak to that.
Okay, thank you, Mike. This is Brianna. I would just like to thank you for moving agenda to item number one. Cemetery bonding. Tommy O'Malley is the leader of our cemetery committee and he has been working for decades on this project. And we recently passed a resolution at our last G B O S meeting to have this item on the April twenty twenty three ballot. We have lots of support from the assembly and recently also had the Chugiak Community Council write a resolution, which is great. And this resolution includes the renovations and improvements of the Anchorage Memorial Park, the project of the Girdwood Cemetery in three different and four different phases, and then the Eagle River and Chugiak Cemetery in three phases. So our community voted in twenty fifteen overwhelmingly to tax ourselves to have a schematic design done for our Girdwood Cemetery. And it's been many, many years. And we are very supportive that this could happen in the next ballot as an area wide ballot item. And cemeteries are basic infrastructure and they are a service of the municipality of Anchorage. And it has not been since nineteen fifteen that anyone has had to worry about cemetery building for public burials. And the Anchorage Memorial Park is running out of space. So this will alleviate pressure from Anchorage Memorial Park by having a Girdwood Cemetery and Eagle River Cemetery. And they will be developed over over a hundred years. So this phasing is really prolonged. And we have lots of support. So we just wanted to update the municipality on that. And we will have legal language developed soon for the ballot.
Thank you.
Margaret.
I was wondering if you were asking for legal support at this time to put that on the ballot?
I think that we should. I didn't know how Tommy had already asked, but we should in this formal arena right now, ask for legal support on that. Or it'd be a Parks and Recreation separate ballot item.
So we're more than happy to help you. I would just wanted to point out that all of our bond proposals go through a kind of a rigorous process with outside bond counsel and and our bond consultants. And the municipality has already put through its bond package for the April election. And so we can, if you guys want to provide us the language, we can, we can try to push it through and get it together for the April ballot. But my understanding is that that's going to be challenging. Because it has to be on the ballot by the end of January, the last May in January, I believe.
Okay, thank you. I was not aware of that. I was just going from guidance through Tommy, who's been meeting with the previous Parks and Recreation Director and now Mike Braniff to be under the right orders of what to do next for this process. So we would really like to have it pushed through. And both the Eagle River leader of that project and Tommy have been working for so many years, it'd be really a shame to have it delayed again.
Just for everyone's educational purposes, the way bonds work is that we, so we get the language and then that goes to our outside bond counsel. And then those go to all, you know, all these banking institutions and we engage in this process of due diligence. Because those banking institutions need to know that that the municipality is going to be able to make good on those bonds. And so that process is kind of, is a very lengthy process because you're asking banks to bid or purchase these bonds from the municipality of Anchorage. And so it's a, it is an extensive due diligence process that happens with those institutions. And then once we get all of that done, we propose the language to the assembly and the exact language that is proposed is what the assembly can accept or reject because that's the language that all the banking institutions have agreed upon. And so the sooner you guys have that language, the more likely, but I will tell you that it is going to be very challenging to get on the April ballot at this point.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Christiansen, for explaining that. I, I don't know what to say. That's not good news, but I will relate it to our Girdwood Cemetery Committee Chair, Tommy, and.
We will do, we will do what we can. We will absolutely do what we can. I just want to put out there the process so that everybody knows.
Thank you.
Thank you. I do see Mr. Braniff is on the, on the call. Do you have anything to add?
You know, only that, and thank you for inviting me and having me here. I would add that we, Parks and Rec manages a cemetery currently. We know how to operate a cemetery. We have a design and development team. And, well, yes, we utilize consultants. It's, it's within the realm of possibility for us to work on the development of a cemetery or more, more than one. As far as, oh, you know, support goes, I would just encourage all of you to work with your elected officials. And if they support it, Parks and Rec will as well.
Thank you. I do have one question. Is there, I know there's a, there's actually a an estimate for, and I just noticed that Assemblywoman, while I'm Chair of the Assembly, Suzanne LaFrance just said she fully supports it. I know there is a construction estimate for at least the first phase for the Girdwood Cemetery. Do you know, Mr. Braniff, if there is also an estimate, an estimated cost for the memorial cemetery in Anchorage and the Eagle River development? So are we in a position? Okay. So we're not quite sure if we're in a position even to say what the bond amount would be?
Sure. I know the amount that Tommy has proposed, but I don't know what construction estimates would be.
Okay, okay. So we do have a little bit more work there to coordinate between.
Right.
Thank you very much.
The documents that are there are outdated at this point from twenty seventeen from Anchorage Memorial Park's data. And then Eagle River was completed in twenty twenty one for their budget estimates for phase.
Okay. So it sounds like there is still a little bit more work to do and it may be too late. Okay, but.
Yes.
A cemetery is forever though. Okay, unless there are any more comments on that, I think that actually moves us on to item number four. Yeah, so item number four is, is really just that we have, so G B O S has, this is our only meeting before H L, the H L B Advisory Commission will probably, although they may delay it for longer, but will probably vote on the Fulton Hills proposal at their meeting on Thursday. So this is an opportunity for us on G B O S to see if we want to make any formal statement to to the H L B Advisory Committee body. We can make a formal statement. We can just pass on all the working documents we have so far. We can write, we can generate a resolution. We can generate a letter. We can do nothing. We can just turn up in person and speak. I would seek opinions from the board. I'm afraid I can't see if anyone has the hand up.
Oh, sorry.
We're just we're just having some technical. Okay, Jennifer, please go ahead.
Thank you, Mike. I would personally vote that we make a formal statement, but that's just that's just my two cents.
Okay, in the would you suggest that's in the form of a letter or in the form of a resolution? We do not have resolution language here, but we can construct that.
I prefer personally prefer resolution because I feel like we've tried a number of letters.
Okay, do you want to make that a formal motion, Jennifer?
Absolutely. I move that G B O G B O S develop a resolution letter. Is that precise enough there?
Yes. And if you could just say what the essence of that would be, what the essence of the resolution would be.
And reflecting our disagreement as a community with accepting the development agree or sorry, accepting the land dispersal that they're about to vote on.
Okay.
This is Brianna. I second the motion.
Okay, thank you. I don't think we have time to actually come up with a specific language. We can vote on the principle of this and then and then effectively develop the language as long as it's consistent with everything we've discussed and documented so far. I think that might be a fair way of going ahead. Any further discussion on this item?
This is Brianna. I I think this is absolutely prudent to do before Thursday's meeting that we have a format of a resolution recommended by the Holden Hills Advisory Committee to where we are right now and why we have come to that point.
Right. So this will be in the form of summary of all of our actions up to this point and our understanding of the situation today.
Right.
Okay. And I think we could, I would suggest a friendly amendment that we have two supervisors who are responsible for constructing that resolution.
I could amend it or I'll I'll amend it as stated.
We also have to have two names.
Okay. I'm happy to help with the the writing of the resolution. Absolutely. If I can be one of the members.
I was just going to accept the friendly amendment for starters.
And I'll second the friendly amendment.
Okay, so we have one name. Do you want to suggest a second name?
I'm happy to work with Mike or Jennifer and whichever one of you is ready to do it before Thursday.
I'm happy to do it. I'm happy either way.
Okay. Jennifer, if you have time, we could do it before Thursday. I'm happy to help.
Absolutely.
So it sounds like we have a we have a motion on the table to to write a resolution which will be which will follow the discussions and the and the all the steps we've occurred up that have occurred up to this point. It will be authored by Jennifer and Brianna. So we are voting to generate that resolution. Obviously, there is a slight risk that there could be things in there which we do not individually agree with. But I know in the past we have had we have had the option of seeing the language at least after the fact. So I think we can probably go ahead and vote. Could you do a roll call vote, please?
Sure. Mike Edgington?
Yes.
Brianna Sullivan?
Yes.
Jennifer Wingard?
Yes.
Amanda Sassy?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero.
Thank you. And sorry, did I see your hand up there?
Yeah, in that letter, you have all your warehouses about what has been accomplished. At the end, is it going to be therefore, we don't support land disposal at this time?
I think that therefore is we are still in the process of discussing the details. Because we do not have a but it will not be, I think, as stands, we've already clearly stated that we do not support the original development agreement as it was originally proposed. And there have not been any, there have not been any other agreements added to that outside of the development agreement. The development agreement itself has not been changed. So I believe that it would be a consistent statement to say that we do not support the original development agreement without other changes.
This is Brianna. I agree with what Mike just said.
We're on the record with that already.
Brianna was the last one's letter as well.
Okay, if there are no more comments on item number four, we'll open up to public comments. Public comments on items on the agenda. Okay, I'm not seeing any public comments, so three minutes early, we are entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move to adjourn. This is Brianna.
Formally, I'll listen for a second.
I'll second. Thank you, Mike.
Thank you. Thank you. We're adjourned. Thank you, everybody, for your participation. I appreciate it.
Thank you.